Meeting to order. Salute to the flag. Ms. Reynolds.
We've pledged allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
School committee members, student reports, school committee chair report. I have nothing to report at this time. Resource committee, Mr. Stevens.
Resource and school buildings are nothing at this time.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Seeing none. Policy committee. Ms. Craigin is not present tonight. Any questions regarding policy? Student support. Again, Ms. LaBelle Pierce is not able to attend this evening as well. School personnel committee, we have nothing to report at this time. Executive committee, none as well. Student report.
It's all you tonight.
So, this past month, we've had a few important dates and events. So, progress reports were released on October 11th, the Friday. Senior portrait schedule, there are, if students haven't taken pictures already, there is going to be dates of December 9th, 10th, and 11th in the main four for students who still haven't taken them. We just recently had our PSAT and SAT school testing on Wednesday. And then Hispanic Heritage, which was a cultural activity where a bunch of students got together, were in the auditorium, and celebrated, and had a good time, like singing and dancing. And then we also had our school improvement council meeting this past Thursday. And homecoming game and pep rally dance, which was on Friday, and then the night at Saturday. And we also had Spirit Week the day of Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, where we had college shirts and sweatshirts day. And then Thursday was mismatch, and then Friday was class colors, where we also had our pep rally. Upcoming events and dates is the Student Advisory Council, which is going to be on the 24th of October. We're also going to be having our AP Saturday sessions on the 26th for English literature and composition. So, any students taking AP classes, it'll be like a good opportunity for them to kind of experience from a different teacher outside of a school what it's like. And then also health fair, so that's going to be cool and interesting, on October 24th, as well as ASC testing, ACT testing.
And attendance rate for FHS is at 91.6, which is the best we've ever had in school history. And also, the chronic absentee notes rate is the lowest FHS has ever seen, at 29 percent. So, those are big things. FHS has started a manufacturing program to develop kids for vocational education and connections to jobs, so that's good. The dropout rate is at 0.8 percent, which is also the lowest it's ever been in FHS history. And the FHS band just earned the silver medal this past Saturday night, and I believe that's their second silver medal in a row, so.
Excellent.
And then, FHS girls soccer just qualified for the playoffs, and so did boys football. They qualified for the playoffs. So, should be a good fall sports playoff run.
Convincing win Friday night, huh?
Yeah, that was a very good.
Quite a game.
Quite a game, yep. And that's all to report.
Any questions in the committee?
I'd just like to congratulate all of the teams at Pittsburgh High. They've all done very well this year and working very hard.
Right. Moving on. Approval of minutes, the previous school committee meeting, October 7th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Motion made, second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. There's unanimous executive session. I don't believe there's a need for executive tonight. Communications.
I'd like to make a motion that we table the superintendent's evaluation until the next committee meeting.
Second.
Motion made, second to table the superintendent's evaluation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. There's unanimous. Thank you. Public comment. Anyone wishing to make a public comment, please approach the center table, state your name and your address. Five-minute limit. Seeing none. Moving on. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair. This evening, it's that time of the year for the Washington DC trip, so Jen, make that long walk up to the, to the mic.
Again?
Back.
And I'll just say thank you for doing it again.
Oh, yes. It's my pleasure, actually. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. We're starting our planning. We're a little bit behind schedule because I was working with our fabulous friends at the GEAR Up this year. They were able to cover the cost of the buses, so it dropped the trip $150 a student. It was going to be close to $800, and now it's down to $650 per student.
Why is that again?
Their trio's covering the cost of the buses.
Yeah.
GEAR Up, sorry.
Oh, GEAR Up.
Our friends at the Mount.
All right. That's excellent. Thank you.
Yes, huge, huge thank you for that. So, we were going back and forth and kind of talking about it, and it worked out really well. So, the kids are super excited. I'm going to have to cap it at, I think, 184 kids, so we want to have four buses, and we'll see how we're doing. Fundraising's off and running, and it's the same trip that we always do, except I think we're going to be going to the Nationals game this year, and I think it's going to be packed there because if they win the World Series, then it's going to be a busy place.
How did that happen?
Yeah, we have tickets already. They already bought the tickets, so. I know. So, usually, you think they're going to win?
Yeah.
No, no, not the World Series, but next year, next June. Did you want to come? Usually, the Nationals game is really, it's not really packed there at the stadium, and it's perfect for the kids to experience their first baseball game, and they can kind of go eat at the different vendors and stuff, and it's usually a pretty light crowd. But if they continue to do this well, I think it's going to be a challenge for us. We get really inexpensive seats. We sit way up in the balcony, and it's a nice time for the kids. But, yeah, we're looking at the same trip again, leaving here from Memorial on Sunday, May 31st, and returning on June 3rd, you know, staying at the same place that we always stay. Capital Tours is helping us out with this trip again, and we're, you know, just excited to be able to do it for the kids. I have my same team back, helping chaperone the trip and coordinate the trip at the different schools. They're really dedicated to make sure the kids have a good time. So, I'm very fortunate. Michelle Wright, Christina Geromillo, and Sean Walker here at Memorial have been outstanding. They've been 10 years we've been doing this together, and they're just a good team. So, that's DC trip. And then we also have our grade six AMC trip heading up to the White Mountains. I don't know if Mr. Shalfo is going to want to chaperone.
Might be able to squeeze out any.
So, that's our annual trip. That will be at the Tuesday to Friday after Memorial Day, and they'll go up and explore the mountain and really do some hiking and get out there in nature. So, it's a, it's a great trip for our sixth graders, and Becky Colow's running that trip for our sixth graders, and we've got a pretty good turnout so far. I think we've got probably about 85 kids thinking about signing up. So, it's, you know, it's a great trip, and I hate for the kids to miss out on it.
What are you doing for fundraising events?
Oh, boy, there's lots of stuff going on. So, we've done Yankee, we're going to start doing, I think they're finishing up Yankee Candle. McKay in Longchamp, we do the candy bars outside of school, so the kids take the candy bars outside of school and do that. They're doing some other activities as well. I know they're looking at other ideas to get some more money going, and, I mean, trying to even come up with $650, even though it's a reduction in the cost of the trip, it's still pretty steep for most of our families. So, you know, we do reach out to the community for donations, and things come in, you know, once, once the word gets out, we start getting donations at the school. So, if anyone's interested in helping anyone out, they can make the checks out to Longchamp PTO and send them right to Longchamp, and we'll get them, just to help sponsor kids go on the trip.
That would be for either trip?
Either trip, yeah, yeah.
To Longchamp?
Yeah, yeah, for the AMC trip.
How much does the AMC trip cost?
Um, I think it's going to be $250 this year, to try to include some of the cost of the bus. We tried to do the fundraising for the bus separate and keep it off the kids, but it got a little close to the, ended close to the last minute of getting the buses going, so we're looking at trying to figure out a way to help the kids get the buses up there because it is, you know, you need a bus to get up to the White Mountains. It's not when they can go overnight without.
So, you'll need what, two buses?
Um, she only took one. Did she take one last year?
One.
One, yeah.
You say 85 kids?
Well, that's what she's looking at this year, but that's, that's the interest.
Oh, the interest, okay. Well, you don't normally yield that amount, it'll be half of that, probably.
Yeah, probably, yeah, yeah. It's a great trip for the kids.
Yeah.
Um, I just want to put in a plug. We have these beautiful donation boxes that Mrs. Fisher put together, I think, three years ago.
Yeah.
And Pete and I have, you know, taken some and distributed them to Country Pizza, really great local folks, Gomes Liquors. The Wyman's Liquors at Park Hill has been great about having one as well. So, I think I'll move forward and do the press release about this, and anyone in the school committee who has a really cool local business, they think would have a donation box, talk to me because I've, I've got the stash, and you've got some too.
Yeah, I think I have about six or seven.
Yeah, I've got at least six, so.
Yeah, we raised quite a bit of money from that. I think almost $400, which paid for almost half of a trip for a student last year.
Yeah.
So, it's really helpful.
Okay. When do you want to get those out?
Um, if we can get them out whenever, you can just swing by the school, and I'll leave them down at the, at the desk. If anyone wants to come pick them up over at Longchamp, we can leave them down there. They're ready to go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me make a motion to approve these.
You want to do these now?
I'll make, make a motion that we approve action item 191234 and item 191233 for the trips to Washington DC and the White Mountains.
I'll second that.
Motion made, second to approve those action items. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. There's unanimous. That's what's different about this one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
23.
Okay. Yeah.
Next item on the list is the FLAC Capital Fund, and the executive director and business manager of FLAC are here to talk about that. I sit on the board of FLAC as to a number of local area superintendents. This is an item that came up as a result of last year's audit in terms of what to do with their excess surplus position, and they had discovered that, at that time, the appropriate member districts had not taken a vote to authorize putting aside funds for a capital reserve fund. So, I think maybe if that, I don't know if that was the genesis of the reason. You're here before us, but now you need to get a number of votes from a number of the vendor, members.
I do.
So, Richard, if you can.
Sure. Well, thank you for having us here this evening. My name's Richard Murphy. I'm the director of FLAC. Terry Birchfield, our business manager, is here to kick me out of the table if I say anything wrong.
And I did want to just congratulate you on the field trips.
I, I think it's fantastic that school committees are still supporting field trips because I know the thought that has to go into planning them, so. And, and bless the chaperones and the parents because I've done that, and I know what it's like. So, I think it's fantastic that you are, you all are still supporting those trips. They sound like great trips for the kids. I'm here tonight to ask you to allow us to establish a capital reserve fund. Last year was the first year that we actually had money over and above what we are allowed to keep in our fund balance. We were, we had to return all of that money to our member districts last year, so you all got some of it, all of, each of our member districts got some of that money. It's based on a proportional formula in our collaborative agreement, so every district got money back. This year, we are expecting our audit will show that we, actually for last year's budget, we, that we actually had funds over and above the amount of money that we're allowed to keep in our fund balance. And what I'm asking you to do is to allow us to establish a capital reserve fund. Our board has approved it, and the language, I believe you have copies of the language that's in it, so if you have any questions on any of that, I'll try to answer it. But so far, we need two-thirds of our school committees to approve it. Right now, we have five that have approved it. We need two more, seven. So, I'm here to answer any questions you might have about it and to ask you to make a motion, and the motion is actually in there in my proposal. If you have any questions, if you don't, I'd, I'd ask you if you would allow us to establish a capital fund.
When you say capital, you mean?
Capital items.
For what purpose?
This year, we have a capital plan. It calls for transportation. So, what we want to do is, we have a few vans, two of which are eight years old, Terry? Nine years old?
Ten.
Ten years old, okay. What we'd like to do is replace the two vans that we currently have, and then we have a van that we lease. FLAC has three different programs. Two of them are public day programs. One is the Caldwell Alternative School, which recently moved from Fitchburg to Leominster. One is our Caldwell Elementary Program, which is located at the Squanikook School in Townsend. And the other programs are, program is our ASDDD program, Children on the Autism Spectrum, children with developmental disabilities. Those programs are located right now in North Middlesex, Clinton, and Air Shirley. The only program, the two, the program, ASDDD program has two vans right now. Those are the vans that are 10 years old. One's a wheelchair van, one is a passenger van. We use those for community experience for the students. We take them out, particularly the middle and high school students go out, do community experience. We have a few students that go out and do jobs. We have one van that we lease, and that's for our students at our Caldwell Alternative School. We've used that primarily to take kids on college visits and to some internships. One of the things that we did when we moved over to Leominster was we came up with an agreement with the Leominster Public Schools to allow our students at our Caldwell Alternative School to take advantage of the vocational offerings over at Leominster High School. They have a really good vocational program over there, so they've been incredibly welcoming, but we need a way to get those kids there consistently. Our Caldwell Elementary Program has never had transportation of its own. There's about at any given time between 40 and 50 students in that program. We usually don't take them all at the same time. They're a relatively volatile group of kids, so we generally take smaller trips with those students, you know, 10, 12 students at a time, and having a couple of vans over there would be fantastic. So, right now, the capital plan calls for transportation. In the future, the way the capital plan could be changed at the request of the board, in other words, the collaborative could submit a new capital plan to the board. The board would need to approve a new capital plan, and two-thirds of the school committees would also need to approve any new capital plan. So, right now, what we're looking for is transportation. If we were to submit a new capital plan, it could be for renovations to some of the buildings that we have. It could be, and one of the, another nice aspect of the building that we got over in Leominster is we have some space that was originally set aside for a woodshop. We're thinking of, of maybe expanding just a woodshop into more, maybe an industrial design type of thing, robotics, something like that. So, it could be that in a year or two years, we submit a new capital plan, asking if we could buy industrial-type robotic systems, designs. I don't know. It could be any number of things. It's going to kind of, going to depend on what it's, what, what the staff over there and the, and the board decide they think would be most helpful to us. So, it's really for those type of things, those type, big capital type of things. Possible, five to 10 years down the road, I'll be probably long gone, but it could be that they decide that, you know, the board decides that it's worth FLAC buying its own building. Right now, we, all the space we have is leased, so it could be that, that, you know, some of that capital fund would go toward that.
What's the amount that you're carrying over?
We anticipate this year, what, Terry?
This year, it could potentially be in the vicinity of $500,000. We're not really sure yet. What typically happens with us is, because of the nature of what we do, because of the nature of the students who come and who the districts keep home and decide they need to place, we have an ebb and flow. So, we never really know year to year. We, we take our best guess, but this year, a year that we have a lot of excess is typically because all of a sudden, there's a surge in the number of students of a particular need, and we try to expand to accommodate that, and then in the next year, we write it into our budget. So, this year, it's high, but that's also because we really maxed out our ASD programs, our autism programs, and our developmental disability programs, as well as our youngsters with emotional behavioral disorders. So, now, we grow that program. So, in next year's budget, we may see a loss. We don't know. I will say, in the 20 years that I've been at the collaborative, when I first started, we, we had a negative fund balance. So, we never really thought we'd get to the point where we would have too much money. So, when that did happen, we thought, okay, so if we do develop a capital plan so that we can set aside money to go ahead and buy vans, we don't have to write it into the tuitions. So, that should save the districts down the road. Where the excess capital also comes from is the number of non-member district tuitions that we receive because 20 percent, I'm sorry, 15 percent, there's a 15 percent surcharge on those districts who send us students who are not members. So, that's not written into the budget anywhere, and that also will save us if we have a year where we're actually experiencing losses. And again, it's, it's, it's been a trick over the last 20 years, trying to anticipate what's coming one year to the next. But again, when we have a big year, it's usually followed by a short year because we've now changed our budget to accommodate the change in the student needs.
So, of the, of the anticipated money, whatever the auditors decide that it's going to be at the end there, Terry is pretty good at estimating that on a year-to-year basis, the capital reserve fund, the way we wrote it, is that 75 percent of that money would be designated by the board to go to the capital reserve fund. 25 percent would go back to the school districts. So, there will always be, on any year that we are able to put money into the capital reserve fund, 25 percent of that will go back to the districts, and 75 percent, the way we've written it, would go into the trust.
Where are you located in Leominster?
We're at 98 Adams Street, right across from the YMCA. It's a, it used to be the Leominster Center for Excellence, and when they moved over to the high school, the superintendent in Leominster said, "I've got a really nice space. Would you guys like to take a look at it?" And I jumped at it.
And we had been at Winesknuck Road.
Right, right.
So.
Dr. Murphy. You've mentioned the word Leominster much too many times tonight. You've used up your allocation of Leominster, all right.
It is one of the L's in FLAC. Although, the first one is, is Fitchburg.
Yeah, the Fitchburg comes first.
Yeah, good, that's good.
Dr. Murphy, did you investigate leasing the vans?
We have done both. We have, we have some vans that are leased. I think the reason why we're looking to write this into the capital plan is so that we no longer have to write it into our budget. Because basically, what's happening now is, in order to have the vans, the tuitions have to support them. If we use the capital fund, the capital reserve fund for the purchase of and maintenance of those vans and write that, basically handle them on the cap, on the capital side, then we can take that out of what we're writing into the tuition budgets when we have those funds available. And again, I can't predict five years out what the collaborative's going to look like, so. But yes, we do, we do have one lease, and we do have two owned.
Okay, because, what, just a total of three vans?
Right now, yes.
And we're looking to have a total of, at anywhere from six to eight in order to increase the opportunities for doing, getting students out for community experience, for vocational training, and things like that. So, yeah, that's basically the, again, the whole point of having it not be a lease is to allow us to, we, we've found that actually, we've done very well with the owned versus the leased, and the fact that we've had them for 10 years, that it's kind of time to.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I worry about, the age of the vans.
Yeah.
As you know, where I'm involved with.
Sure.
We lease seven of them.
Yeah.
And you're not paying drivers, you know, that part of it, and the leases turn over every four years, so you always have an update of new vans.
And we're also investigating whether or not we're going to 7D all of them because we're not, we don't do transportation to and from school. So, we have regularly scheduled trips, but some of our trips are not, so in those situations.
So, you're not checking up students?
We're, no.
Right now, we're not. And the 7D regulations recently changed, and they're much more, they require a lot more of people who want to get a 7D license than they did in the past. So, the majority of our trips, there will probably be a few that are regularly scheduled runs, which will require a 7D driver. We have a couple of 7D drivers now, but the runs that are not regularly scheduled don't require 7D.
How, how do your students get to school?
They usually, it's the district's transportation. So, majority of them now are all vanpool. Well, not all, but I would say 75 percent are vanpool that come from the various districts.
How many students have you?
We have about 130 right now in the three programs, and then we also have related service providers out working in the school districts, and they probably see another 100 or so students that are not our students.
In the example that you gave, where you said, you know, in past years, you had a deficit, you know, hoping that never happens, but if, if there was a deficit, the capital reserve fund can't be tapped to cover that.
I believe that the, well, one, we still have the 25 percent that we're able to maintain above the, the fund balance. So, we still have that to, to offset any losses. So, we should be able to see that coming, and I think, I believe that with any reserve fund, just as it would be something that could be voted out by the school committees. Again, that would be for another purpose.
Well, I understand. I didn't think you could, once it goes into the capital improvement fund, that 25 percent, you could not take it out for.
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
What has happened in the past was that if we had a year when we didn't meet projected numbers, we dipped into the operating fund. So, generally, that's what we've done in the past, is the operating fund has sort of been our float, and that's why they, the Department of Education, several years ago, wanted to do away with us having, allowing us to have any money, and they realized, well, you need to have some money. You're an organization, can't just go out of business. So, that's where the, that's what we've tapped into in the past.
Right, and I just wanted to clarify that basically, if we had a year that was bad, we wouldn't be putting anything into the capital reserve fund.
All right, okay.
Do you have a line of credit?
Yes.
We do.
Yeah. Answer my question. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
I'll make a motion, then we approve the, we can take this out of order, approve the capital funds for FLAC.
191236.
Yes. So, motion, motion made to approve 19-1236. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think we need to make the motion to take it out of order first.
Yeah.
All right. Motion to take it out of order?
Motion to make, take it out of order.
Motion made, second to take it out of order. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the FLAC collaborative to establish their capital reserve fund.
So, moved.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time this evening.
You're now up to six, Richard.
Pardon?
You're up to six now.
I am, I'm up to six.
Congratulations.
We need one more. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Terry. Yep. Okay. Next up, we have Peter, I want to pronounce your name quickly, Trucciallo, and Leanne Scales, Vice President of Enrollment and Public Affairs for Mount Munchus Community College, here tonight to talk about GEAR Up.
GEAR Up, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. While Peter's setting up to show you the real presentation, I wanted to just remind you about the last GEARUP grant that we had. So we have been running this grant in partnership with your Fitchburg schools over 20 years. And the results have really been amazing. We're delighted to be back in. Peter is working with students in your middle schools right now, but I wanted to remind you where we ended with high school seniors the last time. Ninety-five percent graduated from high school. Ninety-four percent applied to college. Over 400 students went on college visits, not just to the beautiful mountain. We took them to New England, we took them to Boston, we took them all over. We want students to be ready for whatever college they are going to be looking at. They received over 12,000 hours of service from our team. Your faculty got over 200 hours of professional development training, I think for several hundred teachers. So this is a really powerful impactful grant. It is probably the most impactful federal grant we run with any partner. So Talent Search and Trio, I know you know we have in your schools, and as you know, those are for students who meet the requirements. GEARUP takes the whole class, and we follow that cohort for seven years. And I'm going to turn it over to Peter, who's going to tell you what we're doing through your own supremacy.
Excellent, thank you. So first thing, all of you for carving out time to let us talk here real quick. So I want to talk about the basics here, just so we have a foundation link about what GEARUP is, what we do. So gaining early awareness, ready for undergraduate programs. That last part's important, undergraduate programs, not college. So we'll get to that. But this is filed into ninety-eight. So Leanne discussed really quickly the differences between GEARUP and Trio. Are they the same? Are they different? Why are there two programs? So they're different entities. They're completely different entities. And after I go over some of the basics, I want to talk about that really quick because it's important and it's something that comes up a lot. So our purpose is to prepare students for undergraduate programs. That's it. Plain and simple, it's that easy. And we do academic support, social support, but also we support the schools as well. And that's one of the main differences, is that we are able to support the schools. So Trio, which started in the 60s, serves low-income first-generation students, L.I.F.G. primarily. We serve low-income schools. That's the big difference. So we are able to use our funds to support schools. So if we want to help support schools with professional development, or technology, or supplies, we can do that. And that's something very unique to GEARUP, where Trio is solely focused on the low-income first-generation students, and they're not allowed to use their money for the schools. I'm sure they would want to, but they're just not allowed to. So that's the main difference between the two programs, but we both have very similar goals. So I mentioned that we serve low-income schools, so that's fifty percent free reduced lunch. So Fitchburg Public Schools, Long Joe, Memorial, McKay. You have a counselor full-time in each one of those schools. And that's another thing that's unique to GEARUP. Many grant programs don't have the flexibility to be in schools full-time. We have a full-time counselor in every single one of the schools on which we work. So they're truly a part of the staff. We aren't really coming in and taking students out of the class. We work with the students, the teachers to be in the class with the workshops and stuff that we provide. All right, so like I mentioned, seventh and eighth graders, that's who we serve. Class of 2024, 2025. So we are able to use our funds to help them. It's a seven-year grant. And so I want to take this time to talk about some of the services that we have done. So quick timeline, we got our grant in October of 2018. All of our staff didn't get hired probably till late February, March. So we were working with five, six months to finish year one. So we were a little behind, but we hired wonderful people. Our counselors are fantastic, and we were able to get a ton done in just the few months that we were in this school for the first year. So the first thing is going on college trips. That was mentioned before. So we are able to bring students to all of these schools multiple times. So every single one of these schools besides UMass and Western New England, we went to two or three times. So we've been there a lot, including during the summer. So during these college trips, we go on tours, but we also try to pair it with something else. So there's a lot of resources at these schools. So if there's a STEM presentation, we go to that. If we can pair it with career services, we do that. One of the times we went to Western New England, went to the Basketball Hall of Fame. So we try to pair it with other services, not just going for a tour, because it's, it's a big undertaking. You're taking students out of the class, it's a long drive, so we want to make sure that it has more than just a tour. And ideally, it aligns with the curriculum that's happening within the classes. So additionally, we get to go on educational trips. This is the really fun stuff. The good thing about GEARUP is that we are, it's required in our annual performance report that we go on educational or cultural trips. So the feds want to see that science, mathematics, English is happening outside the classroom on field trips as well. So we've gone to plays, we've gone to museums, zoos, all over the place. So this is a great selling point for students, especially when we pair that with college visits. It gets them out of Fitchburg, seeing different places. It's a great experience for them. And again, we've been able to go on a lot of these trips. And I'll, I'll actually go backwards real quick. Most of the trips, we plan. We do, you know, the busing, we chaperone. But there are also trips, like Ms. Fisher mentioned, that happen within the schools. Last year, we did the AMC trip, we paid for the buses. This upcoming year, for the trip to Washington, we're paying for the buses for that because it's within our GEARUP cohort, the seventh and eighth graders, so we can provide funding for that. So as, as long as it aligns with our goals and our objectives, the school can have the money. So along with the trips, the educational trips, the college trips, we've also run workshops within the classroom. So the first one was Kids to College. It's a free curriculum provided by Sally Mae. Our counselors ran that through the end of last year, completed six workshops, and ended with a college visit. And now we're following it up with peer-led college and career groups. So it started with our counselors, kind of just up here talking just like M.T.U., but now they're running it, so hopefully it becomes more peer-led. We partner with banks, they come in and do financial literacy with the math classes. And also, we have guest speakers as well that come in regularly. We've had a few last year, we're working on some more right now. So again, these are things that are run within the classes. So we're not taking students out and doing these workshops. For the most part, our counselors work with the teachers because they're part of the staff to do it within the classes. This is something I'm most proud about. So like I said, we were, we've kind of a little late on our services because we had to hire staff, not unusual for a grant program that's just starting out.
You know how that goes. You get a grant, and then you find out in two weeks you have to be...
Yeah.
Two weeks ago. You have to be fully staffed.
There was a lot of work that went into it. But from March to, this is actually to the end of June, ninety-nine percent of the GEARUP students received a service. So that's eight hundred and six, ninety-nine percent received a service. I'm pretty confident at this point, we've reached that seven that we missed. But what that means is that they got tutoring, they went on a field trip, they at least got one GEARUP service. So now moving forward, we're being a lot more strategic in the services that we're offering and how we are measuring that. To start off, we just wanted to get them introduced to GEARUP, get them doing something. But now we're looking at, okay, is this student only going on field trips? Is this student only getting tutoring? So ideally, we're looking for every student to get a whole array of the GEARUP services. But to start, ninety-nine percent after four months, that was kind of, all the counselors and the assistant director did a fantastic job with that, so they deserve a lot of credit for that. And then additional services, tutoring, mentoring, summer programs. We did a summer program last summer in partnership with MACH that focused on MCAS. And then after-school support, and also, we are getting pretty involved with PTO, because again, we can use our funds if GEARUP parents are involved as well. So we're looking to get involved with PTO so we can help them out as well. And then I mentioned that we're able to support schools with our money, so technology, supplies, professional development. This is just kind of a snapshot of what we've done. There's, what we've done is a lot more, but the big ones, Chromebooks, very excited, we got Chromebooks from the entire seventh grade of, of all the schools on which we work. We got a bunch of TI-84 calculators, some MCAS calculators, which was a big purchase, as, as well as the transportation for school trips, professional development, and peer mediation, and we're working on a few other things as well. So we got a lot of things in the works that directly support the schools. The goal of this is to create sustainable change. That's what it says in the grant, to create sustainable change. So what we do, we try to make sure that when we leave the middle school, because we will leave the middle school unfortunately, there's remnants of GEARUP left.
And then we go to the high school.
We go to the high school. So then focus moving forward, I won't read off this, but essentially, it's getting more and more and more focused on college. Of course, we're focused on it now, but as we move forward, there'll be more parent nights for financial aid, for admissions, for college tours. So every year, our objectives change a little bit, but the workshops and the info nights that we offer will also move with those. So it'll become more and more focused on, on college. So I know I throw, I threw a ton of information at you really quickly. I admire the efficiency of your meeting, so I want it to be as efficient as you are. But I know that there's a lot of information here, and I wanted to leave some time to ask questions, because I know there is some, it's a, it's a big grant, it's similar to Trio, we offer a lot of services. So any questions, any concerns, any thoughts? Yep, I'm sorry. The listed schools that you had, were those the only ones that you partnered with and qualified? So Long Joe, Memorial, McKay are the only schools we work with. And for GEARUP, for a school to receive a grant, they need a higher education institution, but also, like I said, a school district with fifty percent or more free or reduced lunch. So that's how we get awarded. So those are the ones we chose, but I know last GEARUP grant, other GEARUPS, as we move forward, we can potentially, you know, add school or add classes to additional grants.
We can, we can apply. So what he's saying is we can apply for another GEARUP.
Correct, yeah. So I know...
We have had them running currently before in the past.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So we could potentially, yeah.
Did you say, did you say you can apply for another GEARUP grant? You mean the two, two running at one time? Any three, four, five?
Well, I'm only one man.
I'm right there.
So I, I know the, the previous GEARUP grant, I'm going to get the numbers wrong a little bit, but they were working with the 10th and 11th graders, but then at the same time, the 6th and 7th graders. So they had two going at the same time. Again, they would have counselors in each school representing each, each grade, but you can have multiple grants at the same time.
I saw one, one of the figures you had there, your goal is to have three counselors in each school?
Three tutors, I may have, maybe I missed type. It's, so we want, we're starting with three tutors in each school. We do have three counselors already, but we're trying to get up to three tutors also to be in each school, because that is a need of ours. And right now, we have one in McKay, we have two hired coming up, so we want...
No, I mean, did you intend three in one school? Three in each school?
Yeah, yeah, three tutors.
You already have three counselors here?
Yeah, we have...
One counselor in each school.
One counselor in each school, and we want three tutors in each school.
Okay, but I thought that I saw three, your, your intention is to have three in each school. That's a small thing, just, okay.
No, I think maybe, so there's a counselor and tutors. So yes, one counselor in each school.
And two tutors.
And we're working on three tutors in each school.
Three tutors, that's what I, yeah, that's what I, that's what I was asking.
Yes. Yeah, the counselors, even though they do some tutoring, they're not, they're not...
Tutors.
Tutors, they're counselors. So they do a number of different things, yeah.
So, so right now, you're just, the GEARUP is for the current seventh and eighth graders, and you, you work with them, not only these, but all the way through 12th grade.
We follow those two classes.
Just, just a comment I...
First year of college, yeah.
That's what's different about this grant. So we have followed them through their senior year before.
Okay.
And so you're there, and I've been in your guidance office when we have the big push for college applications. And every time a student goes out on an application, we ring a bell, we make a lot of noise, it's like a party in there, because we want them excited about taking that next step and applying. What's great about this grant, which we haven't done in Fitchburg before, is we'll stay with those students for their first year in college. And that gives us the opportunity to keep them on track after they make that big leap.
So that's where it's seven years. I keep counting it, I'm saying, we're seven. At least twelve. You know what I mean?
Yes, I do. I do. So that's what...
And just a comment, I, I hope that the staff of the Sentinel and Enterprise are watching tonight, I hope that they get in touch with you, because I think this is a program that most people don't know even exists, and what it does for our students in the Fitchburg district, not only for technology and equipment, but I think a lot of the life learning skills that are so important as they move up through the grades and eventually into college. I didn't know all the details of this until tonight. I think it's a fantastic program.
And just from watching it throughout the years, one thing I've noticed, and they, Peter, and by the way, when you mentioned you hired great staff, Peter didn't remind you that we hired great Peter. So I'll remind you that Peter has joined Mount Munchus Community College. He's just been tremendous leader. But the, the, the great thing to remember is that this thing is up and running, but then students have no idea that Peter and his team work for the college. Like you, you would go through the halls and students, they just think we're part of Fitchburg Public Schools, which is great, because students have that level of familiarity. I'd like people to remember also, because it's the, it's the college, because I want to remind people, this college has multiple partnerships with the city of Fitchburg. Not only Talent Search, Tier, Talent Search Trio, Trio, GEARUP, but also the Early College Designation will be launching soon. So this college is, and Changemakers, which is, Changemakers, and you guys, so we, and United Way Youth Venture. We are, have an incredibly tight relationship with you and your students, because we know our students aren't going to graduate from the Mount and leave and go to Georgia, they're going to stay right here. So in many ways, that's why this community college is especially focused on those K-12 partnerships, because we know that's what keeps our region going. But trust me when I tell you, GEARUP is the most intensive, the most impactful grant that this college has ever run. The, the depth and the amount of interface and funds that can be spent on your students and your buildings and your staff and your faculty, this would be the deepest, most impactful one.
So just another question, you said these services include academic support for students. We already verified that the schools that are eligible for the, for the grant are with the fifty percent and so on. But it's not just the students that have the lunches that are eligible for your support?
Yeah, so that, thank you for, for bringing that up.
Correct, that's a good point.
Yeah, so we are, so it's everybody in the grade, whether they're low-income first-generation or not.
Right.
That's the main difference. If the school is fifty percent or less, or more free or reduced lunch, then the cohort in which we serve...
Yeah.
We serve everybody, yeah. And that's why our numbers are so big. We have 800-plus students, give or take, depending how the wind blows. That's, those are the students we serve. So it's, it's a large cohort.
And the financial aid with partnering schools, that's not the middle schools and high schools, that's the, the colleges, financial aid for certain colleges that you partner with?
Well, so, can you explain that a little more?
I'm not sure what you're asking. I mean, we help students navigate and understand the FAFSA and understand financial aid for when they move on.
But it's not actual financial, like...
No, no, so, okay, I think I know what you're saying. So we, we don't give out scholarships, we, we don't help with financial aid directly from our funds.
Guidance, navigating the financial...
Exactly. We connect school, students with schools, people from the Mount, to help them understand financial aid.
You mentioned Sally Mae.
Yeah.
How does Sally Mae tie into this?
Not at all. So the, the only reason I, I mention them is because the workshop we had, Kids to College...
Yeah.
It, just to give you an idea of where it's from, it's from Sally Mae. It's a free curriculum that they have, anyone can use. So it's not something that we invented. So it's a curriculum that I shared with Craig when he was the principal at Long Joe to have when we move on. So it's, it's made by Sally Mae, but we know not everyone's a fan of them, but they gave us some free curriculum, so we're using it.
Right, fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
One of the things that they do is the Alumni Association of Fitchburg hands out many awards, and we have a very strict timeline of getting in their application for the awards. And GEARUP is responsible to really making sure a lot of these seniors get their application in, because if they don't, we have a cutoff date and they're not included. I think what's one, when did you stop for a year?
It was last, so this is the first year that we're back. There was a gap year, you had a graduating class, and there was one class that we did not. So we were, we were dark for one year.
It was evident that year to us that, we'll say we had like ninety applications, and the year GEARUP wasn't there, we only had like seventy, you know? So they get on the kids and make sure they get their applications in.
But the important thing to remember about that is it's not just a high fill-out and application. It's years spent getting them ready for that moment, so that they're prepared and understand what it means. What we're learning in higher education is the students who don't go on to college or don't apply to college aren't necessarily the ones who aren't academically prepared. They're the ones who, for all those other reasons, they don't either, they don't believe they're really college material, they're frightened and afraid and intimidated by the process. the process. And you can meet a family or students junior year and tell them, I'm gonna help you figure out this big scary FAFSA, and I hate to say it, but it's almost too late. That is the power of GEAR Up. So from the time you're in middle school, you've got these dedicated professionals who are not only helping students figure it out, but they're pouring money into your buildings that you get to keep even after we've left, you know, Chromebooks, supplies, calculator, everything. And creating and building a culture that says, all we're gonna do, the only reason we're here, is to make sure that you're ready for post-secondary undergraduate education. And I promise you, after watching this for 20 years, it's rarely about academics. It's usually about fear of the system, intimidation of the process, or a belief that, ah, college isn't for me, I'm not, I'm not that. And that's what we try to dispel every day. Yes.
That supports it, you give them. Because we have a number of our, our high school kids, particularly that are homeless, living with friends and things like that, where they need that support.
Well, I, but the other thing I really wanna say, and Peter is almost brandy new, but he doesn't get to call himself new at the end of this year, he doesn't, but I will say, though...
Looking for all you can, Peter, where you get that, just saying.
But, but I have to say, Pittsburgh Public Schools have been so welcoming to us, not only for this grant, but United Way Youth Venture Changemaking, and we really appreciate it. We really appreciate it.
And I, I wouldn't be right without me bringing up the Assistant Director Victor Ohas, a lot of you know him.
Yes, yes.
Say Mr. Fisher.
I went, so I went to a GEAR Up conference recently with a lot of first-year grants, and the amount of access that we've had into classrooms, I would say is not possible in other first-year grants. Victor's been with GEAR Up since 99, when it started, so he has had, he has a lot of relationships with teachers and administrators, so we were able to get access to classrooms and to students, to bring them on field trips and workshops, really because of him. You know, so he has done a tremendous job, many of you know him, and he, he deserves a lot of credit for getting this off the ground, because it was a big head start for us as a first-year grant program. That's, you know, pretty unheard of other programs. Yeah.
So I guess, just to repeat what Leanne said, it really can't be underemphased or overemphasized, is that the partnership, and really just this grant, a couple of years ago, we did not receive the GEAR Up grant.
I cried.
But, but I think what, what this year's grant showed is the resilience of, of the Mount Wachusett team, working with us to apply again, even though we didn't get it last year, to get it this year. And, you know, and with the major, with many of our students going to two-year public community colleges, most of them go to the Mount. So that's, I mean, a great partnership that continues. And one question I had for Leanne and Peter is, given Friday's Early College Summit, how does GEAR Up program transition to that or augment that?
There's not really a straight answer, but, but the true answer is, Peter is part of a team at Mount Wachusett that works on all K-12 partnerships, so in his division is also United Way Youth Venture, is also Talent Search, is also Trio, is also all of our early college dual enrollment programs. And we have gotten really good over the years, that when we're having, like if we have a junior symposium, everybody who's got a junior in whatever grant they have, we pool money, we plan things so that they're all together. So another grant that we have with you that I haven't even mentioned yet, Project Healthcare. I know you're aware of that one, with students in your schools who are pursuing healthcare careers. And they were with you for five years, they're now at their first year of college. So those students were here to have early career awareness about healthcare, what sort of jobs they could do. We had people from all the hospitals coming in and talking to them, and then field trips, very similar, lots of academic supports and tutoring. Well, they all took early college as, as part of it. So GEAR Up National doesn't talk much about dual enrollment at all, because the purpose of the grant is not that, and they have no idea what we have in our local, regional, statewide things. But this whole team, everybody that works in our division, is focused on K-12 partnerships. So we look for opportunities, when we're looking for dual enrollment, we look among our students, right, to recruit for those opportunities. So. Did I mess anything up there?
No, that was, that was great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leanne.
Appreciate it.
And Mayor, if we can get a photograph of Superintendent with you, and can you folks come on up for a photograph? We wanna get this to Chad, who does our social media.
Oh, sure.
Only if you let, take one with my phone, so I can put it on my Twitter feed.
Absolutely.
And then we'll just segue, speaking of healthcare, Pam Rivers.
What's that?
Oh, can you set up your phone, so I can take the picture? We need to get a banner that says School Committee, Pittsburgh School Committee on the front table.
All right, actually, Craig, do you wanna?
I can take that.
The honors here.
Awesome, thank you.
It's just, we're...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You wanna get the banner?
Ready or what?
Where, where do we, where are we going?
Right.
Right here?
Do you like vertical or horizontal?
I like landscape.
Alright, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
I know, it's gonna...
Just get it ready to go.
It's wrong.
That's huge button. I missed that one.
What is that? Where's that button in the record?
I think it's in your phone. Wait, don't leave your...
Is that in the record?
She wants one with her phone.
Scale's being difficult.
Hannah, you taking, Hannah, Hannah, are you taking all of this in?
Yes, I'm in Project Healthcare and Trio.
Okay.
Yeah, it's good, I was glad to hear.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having us. Wonderful, outstanding. He's like the new member of the care from GEAR Up now at our school, and he's great, he's fantastic. I see Peter in his office as well, he's super, super cool.
I put you forward a bit.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. It's a big picture.
Oh, it's the census, 2020 census. Okay, yeah, we need to, we need to get those numbers up.
Definitely better around this.
Okay, that's pretty good.
Did you, did you wanna continue your unsolicited endorsement of the Trio program? And it was happening off mic here a little bit.
No, I just mentioned how I'm in Project Healthcare and Trio, and like, I didn't know like Peter had such a big role. And it's, we'll see that from like a student perspective, what he does, because it's so like unnoticed. And I know how like, a lot of students are completely unaware of what goes on in GEAR Up. But like this year, we have a ton of students who are enrolled in the dual enrollment classes, which is super, super cool, because they're getting experience in like, from college professors and teachers, and getting that kind of, you know, feeling of what it's like to have a college course, and what you expect, what they expect. So I, I mean, I, I like the presentation a lot, I think they captured a lot of important stuff.
If I could add one thing, there's the Project Healthcare, but there's also the Certified Nursing Assistant Program through Mount Wachusett Community College, and students have dual enrollment, and they also are able to have the, the classroom, the onsite learning experience, they test, they can come out with their certificate at the end and go right into working as a nursing assistant with a certification. So, again, very, very wonderful collaboration with Mount Wachusett.
Okay.
So, with that said, thank you for having me here this evening. What I'd like to do is just update you on nursing and health services, and just kind of some of the positives going forward. So I'll start off with a couple of grants. The first one is our Comprehensive School Health Services Grant. This was an award from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and I'll just do a little reading to capture the full scope of it. The proposed Comprehensive School Health Services Model Program is intended to provide additional support to the existing required baseline of school health services through a multidisciplinary approach that supports the delivery of quality, comprehensive health services in all school districts. And Pittsburgh certainly is one of those school districts. There's a goal, the goal of this program is to build on existing infrastructure, so what's been in place to provide all school-aged children access to health services program. The program strengthens the capacity of schools to provide case management, to support students with more significant health needs, continuing quality improvement with various projects, there's data collection, analysis of that data, programs that provide access to care, they address any health disparities, this is something I've talked to you about over the years, and racial inequities in the community, in order to support student academically their achievements, and certainly to work on reducing absenteeism, which you've heard about and is so instrumental. So some of the different aspects, the attendance, it's certainly a focus. We've had a couple of years going in association with this grant and the former grant, the Essential School Health Services Grant. The ability to partner with the BRIGHT Program, the Bridging Resilient Youth Transition, it's a reentry program for students that may have to, for whatever reasons, miss periods of time of school. It reenters them back into the schools, allows them to catch up on whatever they might have missed, to have connections, to have goal settings, there's counseling, there's an educational piece, there's an environment where they can succeed and they're not having a return with a non-success. It definitely focuses on their social, emotional as well. The other, you know, ongoing collaborations, this is a lot of collaborations, and those collaborations go on with our UMass partners and our specialists in PD endocrinology, PD pulmonology, to name just a, a couple of them. Our second grant, health-related as well, is our Healthy Schools Award. And I neglected to mention, the first grant has a longevity of up to 10 years, this Healthy Schools Grant has a longevity of up to five years. This particular Healthy Schools Grant is awarded through a combination of the Department of Public Health and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's to work collaboratively to implement the Centers of Disease Control Prevention, which focuses on improving student health and academic achievement through nutrition, physical activity, management of chronic conditions in schools. It's a cooperative agreement, also known as the Healthy Schools Wellness Initiative for Student Success. The former grant to this was the Promoting Adolescent, Adolescent School Health and Success. This particular purpose of this Healthy Schools Grant is to build capacity and support efforts to improve school wellness environments, enhance student academic outcomes, health and wellbeing, and it's just not about one entity or the other, it's the health and their overall wellbeing, so important. This is done through a model of whole school, whole community, whole child framework. They support and strengthen district wellness policies, implement evidence-based health and wellness programs, and their limit is not just a physical ed, but activities, nutrition, chronic disease prevention, and the collaboration of those programs. So some of the outcomes of these grants is various professional development. One of the professional developments that I was able to be, participate in last year was around branding. It was very impactful, given just the needs of making sure that we have a means of not only sharing what we do and we represent in the Pittsburgh schools as the healthcare providers, but also a certain messaging, so that others can come in, it's a visual, it's a conversation piece. So let's talk a little about branding. A branding is a strong personal brand, it's what you're known for, how you present yourself, and that is, can be in the world. It's the impression you make and the reputation we have. Again, how you present yourself in the world, but also what your impact is. So we took this, and this was one of our nursing meetings that we had, our professional development meetings in-house, and we looked at how we want to be seen, how we wanna represent ourselves, and what's the means of doing that. So we came up with these initiatives, we collaborated, we put all of this together, we spelt out school nursing, and spelt out the different things that it represents, so that people would have a visual, if they wanted to ask about something, it could be a conversation starter. We did need to share that we were indeed the leaders in school health. And as you see, the brick on the bottom, it's right at the Crocker Field, it's a former thing that the nurses had done, but it's all about exactly what we do, we promote health and wellness, not only within the school years, but to last a lifetime. And some of the other things that we represent and that participate in. So there's ongoing and upcoming events. We heard earlier about the Health Fair, that is this Thursday, October 24th, reached out to many members for invites within the community. This is a vehicle where students can go and meet folks from their community, they can also learn on, by themselves, go up to different folks, talk to them, take information that's there, participate in some of the displays, and learn about various health, what's in their community, ask questions about things they might be curious about, and even like in Project Healthcare, explore like what's out there that they might not have even been aware of and known about. One of the things is, over the years of having the Health Fair, that the, the vendors have actually come back into the Project Healthcare setting, and had like different presentations, engaging students and talking further about things. So it's a great connection with that. And, and there is an invite out to our mayor as well, and Ms. Craigin is also with the, her pet program, yeah, gonna participate with us, yeah. The other thing that the nurses are very much involved in is after-school clubs and programs, I've shared about the different HOSA program before, and then the Shine Initiative, the SWAP program that is renamed into Minds Matters this year. The nurses also participate in the 21st Century offerings, so that all students can participate and gain experiences that way. They've been very instrumental and recognized at the State House for the Safe Routes to School programs, and they had a recent kickoff on October 2nd of this year. And furthering, talk about the Shine Initiative, they also have had a grant awarding that we've heard out preliminarily, that we are to-be recipients of, they wanted a slight bit of more additional information from us, but we're looking to go further with that as well, to support our students and their interest in that type of club. And then connected to the community, the final thing I'll share this evening, is I have participated in the CHINA9 for several years now. They had asked me to be part of their steering committee, so I was appointed at the beginning of this year, that is a three-year term. And what the CHINA9 is, it's a community health network, and this is of North Central Massachusetts, it's one of 27 CHinas in the state. It's made up of multiple communities, as you see there, and it is a partnership between the Department of Public Health and the Central Mass Healthy Communities, residents' hospitals, local service agencies, schools, faith communities, businesses, boards of health municipalities, and other concerned citizens working together. Their focuses are identifying health needs of members in the community, finding ways to address those needs, and to improve the broad scope of health in these communities, and it's a clear connection with what we do in the schools as well. So I thank you, and I'm open for questions.
Just for the people watching at home, how big is your staff, how many nurses there are, and same number at every school, or?
So, it's, it's pretty much the same number at every school. Right now, we have a staff of 14 nurses, that does not include our substitute nurses. We have substitute nurses, which are about half a dozen in number, some are more available than others. But that's pretty much, we are very fortunate to not only have the nurses in the buildings, but also the nurses and the health experts to take care of what we see as the student needs, the health needs. So what that looks like is we have oftentimes more than one nurse in a building, and we have coverage from as early as our, early in the morning preschool programs, all the way up through after-school programs.
Great.
Yeah, to cover the needs, thank you.
Pam, do you miss the school-based health center?
I do, I do. It's something I would very much like to have back for our students.
We need to revisit that, don't we?
Would like to, yes.
Yep.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Just have a comment. I like your anagram.
Yeah.
You left out one R, which is really listens.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, my, what I, what I see walking into the schools, because again, I'm in a lot of the elementary schools with the pep therapy, and invariably end up walking by a nurse's room, they're always busy. They're always busy, and this is what you hear, you hear someone saying, "Come in, my friend," very cheerfully, and, "How are we doing?" And I hear this interaction, and I can see that some kids, there's a sign outside at South Street that just says, "When is it okay to visit the nurse's office?", and one of the items is, "Just to say hi." Which is great. So these, these folks are doing really treasured work. You know, with kids who aren't always at their best, but it just occurred to me that that's another piece of what you guys do. Very well.
Thank you, yeah. And you brought up, you know, the education as well, I mean, there's a huge part of our work that, you know, doesn't fall short, that we're in an educational setting. We are, you know, very willing to work with students and educate them and watch their growth as, as they go through, and they teach us and we teach them.
Right.
Always learning, right?
Yes, indeed, indeed.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Just one last question, what time does the Health Fair start Thursday?
Oh, thank you, yes. So the Health Fair starts at 8:00 and goes until 11:30 at the Fieldhouse. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's what we got.
Cable? Moving on to the budget items, I'll have Mr. Schalfo just quickly run through the donations and grants.
We have one donation to be accepted, submitting from Sarah Fitzpatrick, McKay for Mr. Harris. The funding source is Big Lots for $100 to provide line paper for students. We have two grants for, to be submitted, one open-site grant for $870, provide support for science kits for the middle school science curriculum. seventy dollars, provide support for science kits for our middle school science curriculum. And Safe Roots School for signs and lanes. We've got, actually believe three schools now who are interested in applying. It's not to exceed twelve thousand dollars. Rhine Gold, South Street, and Long Joe, I believe, are interested in applying. We have one grant to accept, the Innovation Pathway Planning Grant for fourteen thousand dollars, fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars, uh, at Pittsburgh High School.
Committees wish to bundle.
And, well, and I guess lastly, to accept the supplemental appropriation of a million four hundred fifty-six thousand for this year's school budget.
Anyone viewing, remember, we have met net school spending yet again.
But again, with the, this, this year's budget, with the governor's budget, the Foundation Budget Review Committee to help, you know, address the achievement and opportunity gaps, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to bundle twelve thirty-seven through twelve forty-one.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to bundle twelve thirty-seven up through and including twelve forty-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To approve the bundle?
Excuse me?
We made the bundle. Don't we have to approve everything that's in it afterwards?
Well, that's what your vote is.
Yeah. Well, the vote's just to bundle it.
All right, all right, committee member. Well, uh, do we accept?
It's a thing.
To bundle.
Bundle.
Okay.
Yeah. So we've made, we've passed a motion to bundle, right?
Bundled.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the bundle. Second.
Motion made, seconded to approve the bundle. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourned.
The beauty of.